Ready?
Yeah, they're all the same.
They're all the same.
Yeah. They've been there for a long time.
So they don't feel it at seven o'clock.
Okay. Good evening, all. It's seven o'clock. Welcome to the Chelmsford Planning Board meeting of, I think it's the eighth of March. As usual, we are on Zoom.
Tim is on Zoom as well.
Tim's on Zoom and Erica is on Zoom. Have you seen Anita yet?
Yes.
Oh, she's there. Okay. So we have a full boat, although not all the board members are sitting in front of you. And Zoom's been pretty good to us, but just a reminder, if Zoom does go down, we don't stop the meeting just for that. We're going to do things slightly out of order for reasons that may become apparent, but we'll start with a public input. If anybody has public input, this has to be on things that are not on the agenda. Oh, sure. Go ahead. I think that's broadly outside of what was on the agenda.
I'll try to at least keep my comments broad, and then you can do with it. I was wanting to, oh, my name's Ruth Luna, Hen Carter-Dreyf. To, as far as, we sent two letters to the board as far as open meeting law and our concerns. And I wanted to know if the board intended to address our request that the public receive an apology, and if the board addressed the need to be more forthcoming. And I noticed you've improved that here as far as how you're handling remote participation, but also reporting back to the public when meetings are held out of public, even if it's only one or two board members.
All right. Well, let me answer that two ways.
Mr. Chairman, you should not be responding to the public comment. This is not an agenda item that is on your agenda tonight.
Okay.
So you can take the input, and then you can respond.
Well said.
You can schedule an agenda item for your next meeting.
Got it.
If you feel that's necessary.
Okay. On advice of counsel, we will...
We don't want to bundle into, we'll be bungling into a new open meeting law violation, potentially.
Very well put.
That's fine.
Okay. Well, okay. We do have the letters.
Okay.
And the commentary that went along with it. And let us try to address this at our next meeting. You want to put that on the agenda for our next meeting? Assuming, can you do that?
I can do that.
Okay. Yeah, please do. Okay. There you have it.
Thanks. And thank you, Town Council, for your clarification.
You're welcome.
He's great to have. Okay. Anybody else wish to speak in the public comment portion of this? Seeing no one, I'll close the public comment period. Now, we're going to do things a little bit out of order. The first thing we're going to take up tonight is going to be 300 Apollo Drive and Riverneck Road. We'll take them up together. They're effectively part of the same transaction. And, yep, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mike Cantalupa from the Davis Companies. Earlier this week, you got a letter from us about this project. I want to thank you all for, from the last meeting, give us an opportunity to continue to this meeting, gather the feedback that we had, and to process it all. What our letter says is our indication or intention to withdraw our project, as has been submitted, without prejudice, hopefully, subject to a favorable review or vote by the board. It's been a fairly long process for us and for the board as well, and members of the public. We recognize that over the course of the last few weeks, and specifically with respect to the detailed feedback we got at the last meeting. We've been considering what our options are. We determined that we could not make enough modifications to the project and to do the work with enough detail and quality to come back to the board for this particular meeting. And we actually believe that with the likelihood that the members of the board may change with the upcoming election, it's better for us to reset. What we intend to do, and the issues that we are examining in particular are the use. We had specific feedback that the use that was proposed is not necessarily acceptable to this board and to the members of the public. We're reconsidering what that use will be. It will likely, to the extent we refile, be a less intense use of the property. We're also considering, again, based on your feedback, the size of the project and, you know, what the considerations are and how they balance out economically with the use, and the negative feedback that we got on the Apollo Drive access road. So what we would like to do is withdraw without prejudice, reconsider the project, have it brought back. And in bringing it back, it would be our intention to work as collaboratively as we positively can, possibly can, with the members of the community, the neighbors, the abutters, the residents of Monmouth Drive and the surrounding streets. We've actually started some of that. We've reached out to several members of the community that have given us some of the more detailed feedback over the course of the last year. And while we really haven't reached any conclusions, we think it's a good start to how we would reconsider the project. So in summation, we'd like to thank you for all the feedback that you've gotten. We've worked really hard to try to make an acceptable project, and we realize that we have some work ahead of us if we're going to meet with your approval and with that of the community. So we respectfully ask that you vote an approval of us, our ability to withdraw without prejudice.
Okay. Thank you. Let me explain to the board, but really more to the public, what that means. Without prejudice means that the matter can come back in a new application at any time, no particular time limits on it.
Property can come back.
Yeah, the property and, you know, some version of the project. That's what it means, without prejudice. That said, I don't know, there's a lot more to say.
Motion to accept the withdrawal of 300 Apollo Drive without prejudice.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second? We have a couple of seconds. Pick one. Any further comment? I'll call it to a vote. Aye. All in favor? Aye.
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 Yeah?
Aye.
And let me point out that this applies to two items on our agenda. We need another one for Apollo Drive.
Motion? No.
That was Apollo Drive, okay. Then we need one for Riverneck.
Before you do that, the members that are on Zoom need to be roll call.
Yeah. Do we need to roll call on this?
For the members that are on Zoom.
Okay. We've heard from Tim.
Some shit in. Aye.
Anita?
I don't think you can vote on, oh, yes, for Apollo, she can. Yeah.
You don't need Erica's vote?
Right.
No.
Okay.
Okay. So for Riverneck?
Yeah.
A motion to accept withdrawal for 195, 199 through 201 Riverneck Road with, without prejudice.
We have a motion?
Second. Second.
Second from Tim. Further comment? In favor? Aye.
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 Anita?
No. She can't vote on this.
That's right. She can't vote on this one. Erica?
Aye.
Okay. Seven zip. Okay. Then it is withdrawn without prejudice, and thank you for all your effort.
Thank you very much.
Okay. That being the case, let me point out that that also ends the public hearing on both those matters. It's basically off our plate now until another application is made. Okay. With that done, the next item on the agenda, we have some administrative items. The first one is new administrative review, 61 Dunstable Road.
Hello. Chris Sullivan, owner of the property at 61 Dunstable Road.
Yeah.
Just looking to seek an extension on the special permit for a couple of years. Just need a little bit more time.
Okay. Can you refresher us as to what the project is?
It was, I subdivided the land four years, a couple of years ago, and at that same time, there was a moratorium to stop connections to the sewer system. And I went about trying to figure out how I could basically get a septic system put in, but then we luckily found out through further research that I had an entitlement to another sewer stub because I paid two bediment fees. So during that process, I just need more time. But basically, it's a two-family, each unit's 1,800 square feet, and it's just raw land. I just haven't done anything with it.
Okay. Understood. Haven't any comments?
This was originally approved in July 20th of 2021 via COID.
Okay.
Predates some, I think, some board members. And I believe the applicant's looking for a two-year extension of the special permit.
Okay.
So I have a question. The entitlement to the additional sewer stump, is that through, that's indefinite?
Yeah. My understanding is once it's granted, it's indefinite.
Okay.
Good. Okay. Any other comments? If not, I'll take a motion to...
Motion to grant a two-year extension for the special permit extended to 61 Dunstable Road.
Okay. I have a motion.
I'll second that.
Second from Tim. Thanks, Tim. Any further comments? All in favor? Aye.
Again, you need a roll call from the Zoom members.
Yeah. We got Tim.
Tim is an aye.
And we need...
Anita.
Anita.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
And we don't need Erica on that. We wouldn't have Erica on this anyway.
No.
Or would we?
No.
That's an interesting question on an extension.
No, not unless you have a number missing.
All right. So you've got it.
Great. Thank you, guys.
Okay. The next administrative item up is discussion of 12 Kidder Road. I'm going to recuse on this. I've got something of a business relationship with one of the parties, so it's probably better that I step off. So I will go do that. Stand in the hall, and Deirdre, you're the vice chair. You're up. You want to come sit in the importance?
No.
Okay.
Not really. Do I need to move chairs?
No, you don't.
No, you don't.
Okay.
No, you don't. So...
Deirdre, just wait until Mike steps up.
Okay.
Get myself out of here.
So I have the disadvantage that I wasn't on the board when...
Yes, I have no idea.
...any of this was debated or determined, but I did try and do a deep dive into the old paperwork over the last couple of days. And I think probably how we need to proceed is hear from the two parties. Mr. Housler?
Good evening. For the record, Douglas Housler of Lampard, Housland, Robbin, representing the Hyder family. They have requested the board to clarify the vote that was taken to support the minor modification back in December of 2020. At that point in time, a submission was made by the owner of the project, 12 Kidder Road, who sought to go forward with its construction and argued that it was a de minimis change for where it was going to locate a temporary fence. There was a two-page submission by their counsel at that time, and then the board voted on December 9th to grant the modification as presented. And that modification allowed the fence to be slightly moved. It does not address in any way, shape, or form the existing condition than the original decision that said there were supposed to be plantings when that fence went up, so that the plantings would be helpful in preventing dust and other materials going onto my client's property. Notwithstanding that, construction has gone on. Plenty of dust has been moved around onto my client's property, as well as in the area, and there have been no plantings whatsoever. It's our understanding that the building commissioner had not made a determination because he thought it was unclear, as I understand it from my client who spoke with them. All I know is the decision says there's supposed to be plantings now, before they start construction. They've started construction. I don't know what's unclear about it, but somehow counsel for the applicant in that position feels that there's a need to not have to make the plantings. I'm at somewhat of a loss on this one. I don't think the language is vague, ambiguous. The request never stated, "We want to be delayed in plantings." It's just no record of it. So I'm asking you to make a clarifying remark or vote at this meeting that says that the intention of that modification was only as to the fence, the plantings are required, and that you would recommend as a board that the building commissioner issue a stop-work order until such time as the applicant has complied with the conditions precedent to doing the work. I don't know why it was so difficult, but they're reluctant to do so, and if they wanted a modification of that condition, it should have been brought before the board at the time, and it wasn't. Thank you very much.
Adam, wasn't there, was this the one that had property line issue?
Yeah.
At the retention point?
Yeah.
Right in this, in the area of the fence and landscaping.
Okay. Was that ever resolved?
No, I believe that's...
Oh.
Hi. How are you?
Good.
Madam Temporary Chair, members of the board, nice to be in front of you this evening. My name is Attorney Pete Nikosia from Tinsborough. I represent Loop Real Estate, who is the owner of the property where the construction is underway. May not come as a shock to you, but the attorneys have a difference of opinion here in terms of what the intent of the board may have been and what the impact of the vote that took place back in December 2020 on the modification was. We didn't just submit an application for the modification. There was also a plan that was also submitted, which is part of your administrative record and is up on the screen right now, depicting what the modifications were. So if you look at the original plan set approval, the two rows of shrubs were depicted on that plan. They were intentionally omitted from the modification plan, and all we showed was the location of a temporary fence. And the whole purpose behind this, as you know, and as you've alluded to, is there's been private land rights litigation going on between the parties over this common boundary line. And it's this very area in question, which will ultimately house the permanent fence, as well as these two rows of shrubs, depending upon how the judge rules on that case. So to be able to provide a pathway to get a building permit and commence construction, but trying to mitigate the concerns of the Hyders about providing some buffer, you know, from construction dust and things of that nature, we came in and proposed, you know, same quality of fence, but in a temporary location outside of the area that's in dispute so that we could move forward and balance the interests of the parties. So that's what we did. Now, in that case, there's actually an injunction in place that prevents any work or disturbance from going on in the disputed area until the case is resolved. So even if we wanted to, you know, put the fence in where we think the intended location should be, or the shrubs in the intended location where we think they should be, we cannot. Now, the mindset behind depicting the fence and not depicting the shrubs is that putting up a temporary fence is one thing. Temporary fence can be picked up and moved to a different location and reinstalled without the same implications, negative implications, that would accompany shrubbery. You put, you really can't put temporary shrubs in the ground. I mean, they're going to take root structure, and then all of a sudden, we're going to rip those shrubs up and reinstall them in another location. It's not as easy as moving a piece of fencing material. So that was the mindset behind holding off on the timing of the installation of the shrubs versus putting the fence in. Again, there's no dispute that eventually we will have to install the shrubs. This really is a timing issue. So there's never going to be a situation where the shrubs aren't going to be installed. It's just a function of when and where that takes place. So I disagree with counsel that there is nothing in the administrative record that indicates that the shrubs were going to be removed as part of the modification because they weren't depicted on that particular plan. So there is a document in the file. But I think you have to look beyond that and look at the practicalities of the situation as we sit here today. The land rights case, which is going to resolve this boundary dispute and ultimately fix the location of where this fence and these shrubs are going to go, is set for trial finally in June 8th of this year, rapidly approaching. That's a factor. Factor number two is that we're in winter right now, and obviously, there's snow on the ground, and it's not really particularly conducive to planting new landscaping at this point in time. I would submit to you that it's more common practice to install new landscaping typically in the fall. Number three, this, these rows of shrubs were never going to be on the Hyder side of the fence. They're always on our side of the fence. And these shrubs are not any taller than the fence that is already installed. I would submit to you that the additional mitigation that they provide is either de minimis or probably nonexistent, because you have a full barrier fence of the same height that is already providing that mitigation now. And even when the fence ultimately ends up in a permanent place, you'll still have that, and we'll be putting the shrubs up. So as much as I feel that the prior modification decision is evidence enough with that plan where the shrubs were omitted to resolve this issue at a board level, I'd ask that you look beyond that and consider the time of the year and the time of when this trial is taking place that's going to self-resolve this issue. Because once that decision comes down and we know where the boundary lines are, my clients will go ahead, affix the permanent location of the fence, and install the shrubs at that time. So I would submit to the board that the best answer here is to essentially wait until after the land rights trial takes place in June, and that will come concurrently with better timing of the year to install the shrubs anyways and allow them a chance to survive. It would be unnecessary cost and expense with little to no benefit to take the position that those shrubs should be installed any time before that. So it's not a function of not wanting to comply. It's really just timing of compliance. So I appreciate your time.
I assume you want an opportunity to respond?
If I may. May I? Thank you.
I'll let him respond to you one more time.
Oh, I'm sure Peter will have plenty to say. I have no issue with Peter as an attorney, or what he represents, or how he represents people. I have the utmost respect for him. I do disagree with him on its interpretation. More importantly, I disagree with him on how he's presented these facts. The decision, which is the thing that binds everybody here, is very clear. Prior to commencement of further land disturbance or construction, the fence and landscaping along the property line of Hyder shall be installed. Not may, not, we'll think about it later. It's mandatory. And it's not up to the applicant to tell my client or this board, "We'll do it when it's convenient." That's not the way it works. We didn't compromise anything with respect to this modification. That was not a consensual order or compromise. The decision is, still says, prior to commencement of construction or land disturbance. They admit they've been constructing. You heard that. You admit that they intentionally omitted the location of the trees and shrubs. Shocking, because what are you supposed to do? You have to look at the plan to get the intent of what the modification is, or you look at the words in the submission of the applicant, which quite clearly were relocate and only relocate the fence. They're guilty of omission intentionally. And if you guys are going to start tolerating this kind of nonsense and these kinds of arguments, this is just going to keep going. This thing is not going to stop. There's a trial in June, and whoever wins or loses, I can almost guarantee there's going to be an appeal. This thing isn't going to get resolved in a year or two years. So it's really nice for Peter as counsel for his client to say, "It's kind of de minimis. It's not that important." They're not living where the Hyders are. They're not living with the conditions. Loop goes home every night. They're not even there half the time when the construction's going on. Mr. Nikosia isn't there, and I'm not there. But my clients are, and they're suffering the burden. And this board voted specifically these conditions. This was not some extra. This was a specific point raised in the hearings. So I asked the board to put an end to the nonsense. It's common sense. Please, for the benefit of my client, who's a taxpayer here, who's relied on the written record. And when someone says, "Oh, by the way, we've got a Plan B," well, why the hell didn't they put it in the submission that they gave? It's awful. And I don't think my client should have to tolerate that kind of nonsense. Thank you.
Just very briefly, I appreciate counsel's passion for the position of his client, but unfortunately, he didn't display that type of passion the night we were here on the modification, of which counsel and his clients were participating in. It was, it's open and obvious on this plan that those shrubs were not included in the modification. Not a single word of objection came from the Hyders or counsel, asking the plan to be what they considered to be consistent with the written application. Not a single objection from any board member, from any abutter, no appeal, nothing. So I, you know, the fact that that inconsistency, you know, wasn't addressed by counsel that evening, I don't know what to say to the board. I think the decision is clear. The shrubs were omitted from the modified plan, and the intent was to allow a timing feature for construction to begin, to allow mitigation for the Hyder's concerns, and yet balance the concerns of my client of installing quote-unquote temporary shrubs, which likely wouldn't survive on a replant. So that's the rationale behind it. And I, you know, counsel and I could probably go back and forth all night, as we have in other cases, but I think it's really up to the board to evaluate things at this point. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Question, counsel?
Yes?
How large is this piece of land that's in question? I mean, how much distance are we talking about here from...
Like, what's the depth of it?
What's the depth of it?
I would, I think I'd have to have a blow-up of the plan. My eyes are not the best without readers, and I would have to, maybe if Evan can blow that up a little bit more.
Does anybody know? Can somebody tell us?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Could you?
The dimensions are depicted on the plan.
The boundary disputes, there's two boundaries. I call it the north-south boundary of the Hyder property, which is between 495 and their property. That's one boundary dispute. And the other is the west boundary of the applicant, the east boundary of our client, which is depicted here in the vertical, top to bottom.
And that's the boundary that we're talking about here in terms of issues?
That's the strip. We're talking about here.
Doug, could you just go over to the board and just show the line?
So we're speaking about this area.
Yeah.
Okay.
How much of that...
How wide is it?
So, I'm sorry.
How many feet?
How deep is it?
Approximately anywhere from one foot to four feet.
Right.
So, we're talking about moving plants one foot to four feet?
Yes.
Okay.
So...
That puts it in perspective.
And then, can I just ask a question while you're up there? What's the status of construction right now? Like, what is, what level of construction?
Site work.
Your phase? Site work.
Correct. Now, there's a retention basin, there's also, there's also a retention basin in the area there.
Right. Is that in?
Which, no. But that's, you know, the, where the, where the plantings are ultimately going to occur is, you know, it's a, it's a front-to-back domino effect. Where the fence ultimately ends up is where the shrubs are gonna go, is where the edge of retention basin is going to go. So, that was the mindset. So the red hatched line is the depiction of where the installation of the temporary fence ended up going.
Does moving the retention basin towards the building four feet affect your parking?
It was more of an issue with the setbacks. This was an issue we addressed at the last hearing and I can't remember the commentary that there was. There were impacts to the stormwater management system by doing that. We didn't have that ability to do that.
Four feet.
Four feet.
Correct.
Yeah, I vaguely remember the...
And I, I forget from, from, yeah, exactly.
Christina from the town was there.
Christina was there, yeah.
When you say site work, you mean moving dirt around?
Yes.
Okay.
Evan, do we have our decision? Is that in electronically?
It is. Is that the decision or the?
I see, I just wanted to see.
Twenty sixteen?
Decision's here.
Sixteen or the?
September sixteen, September twenty-second or something.
I have it right here.
The modification was December ninth, twenty twenty.
No, the modification.
Oh.
Because the original is nineteen, is two thousand sixteen.
Two thousand sixteen.
I don't think majority of us were here.
December ninth, twenty twenty.
So that's what the decision I'm, I'm looking for.
Correct.
It's not in our package.
Yeah, correct.
That you're referencing. I wanna make sure that...
Well, it has to be read in connection with the original decision is what counsel is saying.
I may reference the two documents. The submission by counsel.
Yeah.
In December of twenty twenty.
Yeah, which we have.
Modifying the two thousand sixteen decision.
Mm-hmm.
And particularly that what I'm pointing out in the two thousand sixteen decision.
Oh, okay.
Paragraph or condition number seven, which is of forty. Prior to commencement of further land disturbance or construction, the fence and landscaping along the property line of hider shall be installed. And what I'm having problems with is I don't see anything about landscaping in this letter from counsel, asking it to be modified.
And again, the point is that we omitted it from the plan.
But you didn't tell us that you were omitting it from the plan when you submitted it.
That's correct.
It's, it's, it's on the plan, which was, which was peer-reviewed by your professionals here, so.
Sleazy.
But it's really, it's not sleazy at all, actually. There's, there's a mindset behind why not, why not to install.
Was it your intent not to install the landscaping then, at the end of construction or whenever?
No, we are installing, as I said, there is no dispute.
A little confused here.
No, you shouldn't be. There's no dispute over the fact that we are installing the rows of shrubs. Once the boundary...
Timing on it is the dispute.
The timing is the dispute, correct.
And also the location.
And the location.
Because the, the way that the approval currently stands, the two rows of shrubbery are to be planted in the disputed area, correct?
On the loops, on the loop side of the ed, of the edge?
Well, it depends, it depends where the boundary line is ultimately fixed and that will affect where the placement of the shrubs and the fence are going.
The fence is already there.
Well, as depicted... The fence is in a temporary location. We moved it back from where we originally wanted to install it because that area is in dispute in the private land rights case and there's an injunction in place preventing us from making any disturbance of that area. If, if my client is successful in the land rights case, this disputed area will have the fence and at least one row of these shrubs. So that's the issue here. It's a timing feature only. We're not disputing that it has to go up.
And so then, the second row of shrubs would be outside of the disputed area?
Yes.
Okay.
So, what would be the depth, does anybody know, between the two rows of shrubs?
You can't tell from this drawing.
No, I mean...
You'd have to go back to the original, the original plant.
If you're gonna plant a row of arborvitae's, do you plant them six feet apart or ten?
I have the original.
I'm sure Anita wants to speak.
Anita.
Anita.
I have a question. When the original decision was made, was the land in dispute?
No.
No.
So the, so the intent when this initial decision was made, that there would be shrubbery in a fence before construction happened?
Correct.
So only after?
The hiders filed the suit and the injunction order was issued, it prevented us from being able to complete the plan that was in place and approved.
But the intent has always been, if there's construction, that there would be this buffer in place?
Eventually, yes. So, because, because we couldn't...
Well, no, like...
No, it's a condition of the binding.
The intent in twenty-six...
Right. I know, but here, you have to understand something. We would've done that but for the hiders taking an action preventing us from doing that. They went into court, there was an injunction that was put in place that prevented us from putting these things in, in the intended areas of where they were to go. So that's why we came in for the modification, to be able to continue on with construction and choose a temporary location for the fence until the dispute was resolved.
But couldn't you also interpret their actions as, as making the, the fence and the shrubs were being put someplace that they thought was on their land when it had been agreed upon that it was gonna be on your land?
No, not at the time. Because the, the land was not in dispute when the approval was granted.
No, but that's why they sought the injunction and sought the relief from the town, from the land court, was because they felt there had been a violation of, I mean, I have to surmise.
Yep. So that's why we came in for the modification. That's the, that's the reason.
But the point of the shrubs and the, and the wall was to protect them and to mitigate the impacts of the moving around of the earth?
Absolutely. And that's why we've put...
But you're moving earth?
Yes.
Without them?
One second. So, we completely understand what the purpose of the fence and the shrubs are and we completely agree with the fact that eventually, these things will be in the ground. The question is where the location will be for these items.
Yeah, but then, at that point, the earth will have been moved around and they won't be mitigating anything.
Thank you.
I disagree with that. And the point that I was trying to make is that we came back in here for a modification trying to balance those interests. Us moving forward with accomplishing some mitigation for them in that process. So the way that we did that was, the most significant barrier for mitigation is the fence. Because the fence doesn't have openings in it, the fence doesn't have spacing between it, the fence is gonna be the most successful way to stop any dust movement onto their property. So we came in with a proposal to move the fence out of the area to allow construction to begin. It, it's the same rationale. Putting a fence in temporarily is one thing, putting shrubs in temporarily is another.
Well, what if you didn't put them in temporarily? What if you put them in on the loop side that isn't disputed? At least one row.
Why, why should we have to concede on our private land rights claim?
You're gonna put, if it's one to four feet, you're not gonna put two rows of trees in a one to four feet border, correct?
No, but it's gonna be outside of this retention basin area.
So you put it inside, inside the one to four feet disputed area, there's one row and then another row could go on this side if you guys win and that side if they win?
No, because the fence is going to go back. The fence is going back to the original location.
So, I'm understanding why you haven't put a row of trees in the four-foot disputed area. I'm not understanding why you haven't put in the other row of trees that's outside the disputed area.
For, for multiple reasons that I've just stated, but I'll, I'll state it again. Number one, we came in and got an approved modification from this board in twenty twenty that omitted the shrubs from the modified plan. That's number one. They're not on the plan, so...
But they're still in the decision. And that's, and you didn't ask to have the decision modified.
That's how you're interpreting it. You, I don't believe, I don't know who was sitting on the board at the time. I understand that might be how you're interpreting it now.
I don't see any modified decision.
I also don't see any objections to the lack of the shrubs in the plan that took place at that hearing. And I watched the video of that hearing again. That's number one. Number two, there's a difference between temporary shrubs and a temporary fence.
Talking about temporary shrubs.
Because they're going to be moved if we are successful in the land rights case.
The second row doesn't move.
It's fine, if, if you are successful.
If we're successful, both rows of shrubs and the fence are all moving.
So, I, I guess my question on that is, the, the plans that were originally approved?
Yes.
What I'm hearing is that there was one row of shrubs in the disputed area and one row of shrubs outside of the disputed area.
I believe that's the case, yes.
Okay, so...
But the locations still will change. Doesn't matter.
The second row doesn't change.
Why, yeah, why does the second row?
It does change. The, the placement of the shrubs will change as to where they will ultimately go in relation to where that fence is placed.
Look at the plan.
So, but why?
Because we're trying to maximize our area of the retention basin.
So there's...
That's why.
There's a plan that's already been approved that shows the location of those shrubs.
Correct.
Until that plan is modified to change that location, those shrubs have to be planted in the location depicted on the plan.
Correct. And what we did as a temporary measure was come in here to move the fence and omit the shrubs until such time as the litigation is resolved. That's what December twenty twenty was. And nobody objected to the fact that the, nobody objected and nobody appealed the fact that those shrubs were not depicted on that plan.
I am sympathetic to the argument that the, the presumption at that time was that you would not be planting the landscaping that was shown in the disputed area. Because the purpose in, in reviewing the, the letter that was submitted asking for that change, it doesn't talk about the landscaping, but it does talk about the fence and it does talking about you to allow, you to move forward to obtain a building permit.
Correct.
All right, so I am sympathetic to the, the chain of thought that says that that intention was to not plant the, the row of shrubs that are in the disputed area because you would, you literally could not do so because of the injunction that was issued by the court. The, the argument that that letter also requested relief for the row of shrubs that is on your property outside of that disputed area, I'm, I'm not so clear on. I, I don't necessarily think that that follows. So, I mean, that, that's where I am on this. I, I do think that the...
There was no request to modify the conditions. And the row, and the planting was part of the condition.
And, and the bigger concern is that there's a presumption that you're gonna come back in and, and plant this row in a different location than was originally depicted, but that would require further proceedings in front of this board to modify the plan to change that location.
Yeah.
So, that's fairly presumptive that the board would actually grant that relief.
Has every board member that's sitting on the board this evening watched the video of the prior meeting of the December ninth, twenty twenty modification meeting to try to further discern the intent of what the sitting board members were at the time?
I was a sitting board member at the time.
I was a sitting board member as well.
All right. Well, for the board members that are here tonight, that warrant.
What was the date on that?
December ninth, twenty twenty.
But I clearly remember from that meeting, it was regarding the property line, the fence. And I also remember discussion from Christina regarding the plantings and the maintenance of the retention basin. That's why when I first asked right away, has that been resolved? Because that's what, I think it was to inform the board that this was taking place at that time. Now, that's all, I mean, I'd like to go back and look at this and, and then see exactly what was said because I don't think we, the intent was to deviate from the original plans because unless we call for that we're deviating from the two thousand sixteen order of conditions.
But here's the thing, if the fence moves...
But I also do see, being in the construction industry, usually landscaping does not take place until the end of the job.
Exactly.
Because, usually, except this is unusual.
And it's, and it's specifically required in the original...
Specifically required by the conditions.
And I know the chairman on it, so that's why I can understand why, right? Which is good.
But it's obvious that if the fence was moved, the shrubs are gonna have to move.
How big of shrubs are we talking about?
Two and a half caliber per, probably six feet.
Six feet.
Six feet.
Yep. Which is no bigger than the fence.
No, but it helps with dust.
Yeah.
Okay, so I just...
Sound and dust.
And then again, these issues of time of year, time of this trial coming up, I think those are relevant factors for this board, too.
It's more on the sound, though. A push is more for sound.
When did you start the site work?
I don't know the exact date.
Was it the fall?
It's like October, October.
Last fall.
When, when the client, it was the board and then it got continued because of certain measures, counsel wasn't able to be present to present.
Okay.
It's been delayed three months.
So they've been working through all that time?
Oh, yeah.
Yes. It was a mild winter, so...
Yeah, basically, the, the soil didn't even freeze up this winter. So, I mean, you're not even frozen up in terms of plant, being able to plant.
Nobody's, nobody's planting shrubs in the snow in March right now. That's an unreasonable position to take, as far as I'm concerned.
It's not frozen.
Precisely, is that why it should have been done?
It should happen.
Before you commence.
Yeah.
That's what the decision says.
This is, this is why we omitted them from the plan. So that's the issue that you have to reconcile.
Put it in your back pocket and don't tell people what you put in your back pocket.
No, it really isn't. The plan, the plan, the plan's pretty obvious.
I think, I, I don't, I think we've heard from both of you.
Yep, we appreciate it.
So can you sit down, please?
Sure, thank you.
Counsel?
Um, so I feel like we have two ways we can proceed. One is to table this for the moment and everyone go back and watch the December meeting. I personally feel that it's been delayed a number of times and they've been, what did they say, doing site work throughout all that time and that the plantings were meant to be mitigating the impact of that site work. So my preference would be not to try and read the tea leaves and infer from people's furrowed brows or whatever what their intent was, but rather to use the words that were written and the decisions that were made and the conditions that were placed. And that can be enough of a basis for us to make our decision, in my opinion. Does, do other people have?
I agree, I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, so then...
I absolutely agree.
Does anyone?
I agree as well.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'm not quite sure how to put this, but...
What is the motion?
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Because if you're gonna ask them to put the plantings in prior to, you're gonna have them stop construction.
Yes.
Put the plantings in.
So if that, but are we, do we have authorization to do that?
So, I would, I would make a motion that we...
That, so just, if I can answer that question first. You don't have the authority to issue a cease and desist. All you can do is provide the clarification as to what was approved as part of your insubstantial modification.
Which is what was sought tonight, really.
I just didn't know what the decision potentially could be.
So, so I would move that we provide a finding, provide an interpretation, no, provide a clarification of our previous finding that we did not approve a modification of the conditions that require the plantings to be put in prior to construction.
The only clarification I would make to that, I, I think that the modification, if you read everything as a cohesive whole, I, I think that you can interpret that the modification did provide relief from the planting of landscaping in the disputed area.
Absolutely. I mean, there's an injunction prohibiting that.
Well, there's an injunction, that's, I believe that's, that's outside of what we could do anyway. The injunction already deals with what's in the planting area.
And there's nothing in the relief that you granted that talked about putting multiple rows, exactly, multiple rows of landscaping outside of the disputed area. So I think that the only way to properly interpret it is to say, you know, at minimum, you did provide relief for the one row of landscaping that is in the disputed area.
By moving the fence.
Madam Chair, a point of order, please. May I? Thank you. I most respect the town council, but it's the board's determinations here, not how you interpreted, Paul. I think the motion I was hearing was very clear that it was not the intention of the people that voted to waive any condition, any condition about shrubs or plantings. So with utmost respect to town council, that's the board's purview, not town council's. And you're steering it into something opposite. All we ask for is interpretation of the board's intent, no more, no less, so that it could issue its intent, we could bring it to the building commissioner, and he would follow that intent. That was the only purpose of this. We know the board can't stop it.
And, Madam Chair, my role is to provide advice to the board.
Yes.
And it's always appreciated.
We appreciate it.
Okay.
Just to clarify that.
So let me clarify, try clarifying this again.
Is because the board requested counsel to be here. If you did not request counsel to be here, then I would have. Because as you know, as soon as something gets involved with two attorneys, I bail out. And if counsel wasn't here, counsel wasn't here, it's clear that the board wouldn't know what to do. Because half of you weren't here.
It's a legal question. That's right.
Respectfully, you should be listening to counsel because it's already being litigated. And no matter what you do, it will likely continue to be litigated. So that's why counsel's here.
Right. Alright, so let me try and rephrase this. I would, I would move that we clarify the decision that was made in the modification did not intend to and did not produce a modification of the conditions of the site plan approval.
Beyond the look, beyond the location of the fence.
Beyond the location of the fence.
Shouldn't be called the area in question, the disputed area.
Right. I would like to amend that if I could. I don't know, or propose that we think about amending that in such a way that we-
How would you put it?
We-
Because I'm fishing here.
Because there's an injunction in the case prohibiting landscaping in the disputed area that we would expect-
But that's somebody else's to deal with.
Right, but we would expect that the, that the remaining aspects of the decision that aren't impacted by the injunction be enforced.
Correct.
That, okay, that makes sense.
But I can't make a motion.
You can, actually.
You, you can. Yeah. So you would modify it in that way. And it's on record because it's recorded. Thank you.
Now second that.
Thank you.
Shall we take a vote?
Take a vote.
Any further discussion? Okay, let's take a vote.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Tim, share the hands tonight.
Aye.
Anita doesn't add.
Aye.
And then Erica?
No.
Nope. She doesn't vote.
She doesn't vote on this.
For Mike? Six voting numbers.
Yeah, it's, she only votes on special permits.
Oh, okay. Six oh.
Alright, very good.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Closed.
Thank you.
You want to send Mike back in?
Room full of people.
Yee-haw. Bye-bye.
Your choice.
Well, you know, somebody's got to do it.
Run the planning board. Stay on the planning board.
Hey, you want to call Mike back in?
I thought that we asked for someone to. Can you guys send Mike back in?
He laughed into peering or something?
Ah, he better not.
He's got back from the Hong Kong.
There you go.
You just, just interrupted a very interesting conversation on cybersecurity.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Security, you need me for anything else? Not that I'm packing up or anything.
Well, you know, you might-
Let me see, do we have anything else in here?
We still have 250 Apollo.
I don't think that's going to have anything. I think you're fine. Hey, thanks an awful lot for coming down tonight.
Thank you.
Yes.
A grand help.
Alright.
Okay, let's see, well, Kitter.
Apollo request for continuation.
First, let's cover continuing public hearing. 264 Groton Road has requested a continuation without discussion?
Motion that we can continue until the 3/22.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion second, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody out there? Anita, Tim?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So that's continued to the 22nd. And the only other thing we've got is 250 Apollo Drive.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Jim Hanley, Civil Design Consultants. Kind of here tonight. I think we have everything we were hoping to lined up. And I'll just kind of give you a brief overview of what we've done since January 11th. So we were here January 11th. It was our first, first official hearing for you for the special permit, other than the ability, requesting the ability to file under the CEIOD. At that point, we had had maybe a half dozen review letters from town departments. On February 1st, we submitted a revised set of plans as well as response letters addressing border health, building, water, sewer, DPW, and fire. For the most part, the adjustments to the plans were minor and detail oriented. We, and I'll just kind of give you a very brief overview. First and foremost, we eliminated the onsite treatment plan, and we're working with DPW to develop a, an agreement on tying into the, to the sewer with the understanding that there's fees associated with it based on our sewer flow. We're still kind of in the process with that, but that's something that we've, we've agreed to consider as we, we move forward this. Instead of the onsite treatment, which I think addresses the large majority of the comments that we had, provided an operations and maintenance plan for the stormwater, provided additional construction details in notes on the plans. Fire department asked us to take another look at the emergency vehicle turning movements throughout the site. So we put together a computerized graphic with the fire trucks turning limitations and movements on that. We also met with conservation for a, an ANRAD, which is a notice of resource area, an RDA, request for determination of applicability. So we met with them twice in February, and they issued a negative determination, which means we do not need to file a formal notice of intent. It was really specific to the existing vegetation that's located within the existing detention basin. So we've, we've satisfied them as well. With that being said, I think, I think for the most part, we have everything addressed right now. Again, we're still working through the specifics of the agreement with DPW to allow a tie-in. We've, I've had a number of conversations with the town engineer. The only other minor item is I've gone back and forth with the water district a little bit about just coordinating our record subsurface waterline location information with theirs and just trying to get on the same page. For the most part, I think that all of the details that have been requested have been provided.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm here tonight with Alan Coleman, Matt Gerost, the project architect. If you have any questions, we're prepared to try to answer them for you. And just kind of to recap, I think where we, where we're sitting right now is, is we'd like consideration for a project approval.
Okay. Evan, so where do we stand here? We have not opened a public hearing yet, have we, or?
No, you have.
We have, okay. So we do have an open public hearing.
And I have some letters.
Okay, why don't we read the letters?
The letters that you're reading are from back in February. And as the applicant stated, this was last, this hearing was last open in January.
Right.
So the letters, the background that the applicants referred to, all of those issues have been addressed, revised plans have been submitted. In Philly, minor items that were in the letters.
Okay. Evan, these letters, were they in response to the latest drawings or are they to previous drawings?
From my understanding is the drawings, the drawings have not substantially changed. I believe you submitted very minor revisions related to the, the water pipe for the district. But those letters reflect, they're clean letters, basically, from the departments.
Okay. So, anything that's in here has already been provided to the applicant and they've responded to it, is what you're saying? I mean, there's, there's not a lot in here, so.
What, what's the date of the letters?
Well, this one's February, yeah, these are February letters. Early February letters.
Yeah, I, so everything that I've received, I know we've addressed. So, that's all I can say.
So we can put on record what's, read the letters and put it on record as to what it was. And, you know, if we have any questions, you can tell us how you dealt with it.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. First letter is from Fire Prevention Office. Dear members of the board, the Fire Prevention Office has reviewed the revised plans for the addition at 250 Apollo Drive and finds the following. Water supply, including the required pressure and flow, shall be confirmed by a current water flow test performed proximate to the site with all calculations submitted to this department for review and approval. Hydrant location as proposed is acceptable. The Chelmsford Fire Department requires a hydrant within 60 feet of the fire department connection and a hydrant within 500 feet or all points of the exterior of the building for manual firefighting operations. Hydrants and fire protection equipment shall be free from landscaping or vehicle obstructions with clearance of 60 inches to the steamer connection and 36 inches to the rest of the hydrant. The fire department connection requested by this department has been provided for. Fire apparatus access is acceptable. The project team designed adequate fire department access using the Chelmsford Fire Department ladder one specifications. All fire access roads shall be capable of supporting the weight of fire apparatus. The developer's proposal for maintenance of fire access roads is acceptable. An automatic sprinkler system conforming to NFPA 13 and a fire alarm system conforming to NFPA 72 shall be required. Fire alarm, fire sprinkler, and standpipe systems within the addition shall be integrated with the existing systems in the building. Fire alarm initiating and notification appliances should report to a single fire alarm panel. All fire systems shall be monitored by a UL-approved central station monitoring service, and all components and fire protection systems must comply with state building code and Chelmsford Fire Department requirements. All equipment related to fire safety shall be located at the discretion of the Chelmsford Fire Department. The applicant is advised that testing for emergency radio responder communications throughout the existing and proposed building areas and, if necessary, installation of a bidirectional amplifier system shall be required according to Chelmsford Fire Department ERRC regulations. Any fire alarm master box still installed at 250 Apollo Drive shall be removed prior to the start of construction. Due to the Chelmsford Fire Department's operational model, for firefighter safety, a standpipe system conforming with NFPA 14 shall be installed throughout the building with no portion of the building more than 200 feet from a hose outlet. The applicant will be required to provide an interior stairway for rooftop access. The developer shall install an aux box keyed to Chelmsford Fire Department standards at the rear of the addition at a location that is acceptable to the Fire Prevention Office. The applicant must apply to the Town of Chelmsford E911 Committee for address and unit numbering through its coordinator, Town Clerk, Tricia Zuris. This letter would approve of these plans as submitted and requests that the planning board include this letter as a part of the approval process. Respectfully submitted, Danielle Kotsufus. Police Department, no comments.
Yeah, go ahead, Anita.
Nice ask, but quick question. Are these letters attached to the agenda?
Uh, no, I don't believe they are.
Just pull them up.
Some of them are.
Yeah, I think they are. Some of them are.
I think that these are from February.
These are February's.
What do you, what do you see for dates on the stuff that's posted?
January.
January responses.
But she's reading them.
Okay, can I go on?
Yeah, please do.
Alright. The next letter is from the Building Department. Building code and zoning dimensional requirement. Dear Hanley, in the event that the planning board approves of your application for a special permit to move forward with your proposed construction project, please be advised that such project needs to meet the state of mass building code, the energy stretch code, ADA compliance, 521 CMR, and the Town of Chelmsford dimensional requirements as per the bylaws. Thank you, Jose Negro. The next letter is from Chelmsford Water District. Dear board members, the Chelmsford Center Water District has concerns with the proposed construction on this site. A representative for the project should contact the Chelmsford Water District. Once a contractor has met with us, reviewed and accepted our requirements, we will forward a signed approval letter to you. In addition, the Board of Water Commissioners, upon approval of the proposed project, would request the following four bullets be part of your order of conditions. One, the project shall be built to the current rules and regulations found on the district website. Two, water is for domestic use only.
That doesn't, that's a little interesting.
That makes no sense. Three, water-saving devices should be utilized throughout the facility. Four, zero-scape landscaping should be implemented to minimize water usage. The next letter is from DPW. This office has reviewed the revised set of plans and response to DPW comments. As a result of this review, this office has the following comments. General comments, DPW acknowledges points two through 13 and has no further comments. Sewer, required sewer comments, point one, CDCI is in the process of preparing a sewer mitigation proposal. The proposal will be provided to DPW for review and consideration to allow for the building addition to connect to the existing municipal sewer system. DPW has reviewed the building addition design flows, provided and does not agree with the findings. Any addition cannot be based on usage of an existing building. Title V shall be used when calculating proposed sewer usage. The applicant may submit an engineered value analysis quantifying the amount of reduced water and sewage usage from the property owner investment in low-flow fixtures, which may be considered as a deduct to the Title V calculated flows. Sewer removal through the sewer capacity credit transfer policy calculation should be as follows. Total sewer flow rate, total sewer flow rate of addition, 1,658 gallons per day. Allowable increase to the sewer, 500 gallons per day. 1158 minus 500 equals 1150, 1658 minus 500 equals 1158 gallons per day. One gallon per day of new flow credit is given for every two gallons per day of approved II removed from the system. Total GPD removal required, 2,316 GPD prior to occupancy. And that's all I have.
Hey, thank you.
So I think we have some things that need to be cleared up before we-
Can I, can I just clarify? So, we did get all of those letters. And if I just go through each one of them, Fire Department was essentially asking us to comply with state building code and NFPA when we submit for a building permit, which is something, obviously, we're going to do. Building Department was essentially the same comment. They want us to comply with the building code when we submit for a building permit, which we will do. The Water Department, I've talked to the director a couple of times, Evan was on the emails with him. We've worked through his concerns. He asked us to upgrade the size of the fire pipe from six inch to eight inch. We've done that. The only remaining comment that I have to clarify with him was just coordinating, again, our records with his records and making sure that what we're showing on the plan is, is correct. So I don't think that, that's a detail I think we could potentially condition. And then as far as DPW goes, I have provided that information. Evan was on that. The, the discussions that we've had is that we provided a sewer estimate based on the last decade of flow for the existing building. DPW wants us to use Title V, and that's what they've used there. Then they multiply it times two, okay? So, we're definitely going to capture any potential sewer that's going to come out of that building addition. And they, they've, they're, they're, right now, they've given us a range of numbers that, that will be responsible to contribute somewhere between 30 and 50 to- that will be responsible to contribute somewhere between $30 and $50 per gallon per day as a one-time fee that gets submitted prior to occupancy or gets paid prior to occupancy. I went back and forth with DPW, I think it was late last week, early this week, we agreed to the 30. 30 now is too low, okay? And so it's probably going to be closer to the 40. So we're having these conversations, but I don't think that's something that happens over the next couple of weeks. They're putting together their, their program for citywide, not just specific to us, and we've agreed to work with them to get access to the sewer so we can avoid a treatment plant. So from where we sit, we think we've addressed all site-related technical comments from all department heads that we have at this point.
Thank you.
I think that's a fair statement.
Okay, good. Well, I think probably the next thing to do here would be to open it back up. This is a continued public hearing, and I wanted to see if we have any comments. Ah, there we go.
Arm and Jack Devoy, 5 Billy Terrace. First off, I think this is a great project. I've been watching the past couple of meetings. Great size, great idea of robotics to put in there. I think it's like three loading docks.
Yeah.
It's, it's in a great spot. So everything I have is positive. However, while I was researching the access road for River Neck, I came up with something I want to present to the board, just for clarification. I'm not here to jeopardize a project. I just want to be very fair. I emailed it to you guys, but I'll just hand it real quick.
Did you just email it?
Like literally a few minutes ago, yeah.
Okay, so we haven't, we haven't seen it yet.
No, you haven't. I apologize.
Oh, that's okay. I understand.
I would keep my mouth shut until it's...
You're doing your homework. I got buzzed and I looked at what's your name.
It was just, I wanted to clarify because of what happened in the past.
This opening is on the board.
Yeah.
I think you'd be great.
Yeah, we do.
I might, I might create a virtual...
So as we know...
You have patience for this.
Huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, you could do this.
I'm sure I could, but I, not like this probably. As we know, Tamone had the five, the seven lots with the buildings. 300 came first, and then a year, 86, 250 came up. The special permits were issued in 87, the first two pages. If you read the bottom, they unanimously approved. But then, at the same time, Tamone was working on 129 with the traffic issues from Route 3 to Golden Cove. A year later, because it wasn't built yet, 250 came up again for an extension of the special permit. If you read the bottom, there was great concerns with traffic, and they required a traffic officer at peak times at Apollo Drive and 129. Both permits have it a condition. So I noticed there was no traffic study. I can't imagine that this project is going to have a lot of traffic, and now more people are working from home than on Apollo Drive. But they did say that building is 75% full, if not more. So I'm just curious with this manufacturing and trucks and new employees, is, are we going to have an impact with that? Because if you go further in, Van Hess has a letter addressing how back then they were going to have a three-phase build-out. Route 3 to Omni Way, Omni Way to Alpha, then Alpha all the way up to Golden Cove. A lot of it didn't happen because of funding and time for what I saw in the BOs meetings, but just wanted to bring it up. Like, are these restrictions still required, or is, do these go away because we have a new permit? I'm not trying to, I'm just, my, more of an understanding than anything else, you know? I hate to have these guys get caught up with something else down the road like what happened before. And then you can see the last two pages, the bottom, is the BOs meetings from 88 where they were discussing the funding and then how the expansion was going to go. And back then, they were saying they estimated 20,000 cars a day on 129, and five to 10 years later, 25 to 30. I tried to look online at the traffic count, and the only sensor I could find is River Neck at Bilrika, and it said 15,000 last year.
Look in the master plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
There should be some data in there.
It was lower than what they...
It, it, yeah, but that was for the pandemic too. But again, I'm not trying to jam, I just wanted to clarify, is that required anymore or is it go away because, or is a traffic study make it all go away? I don't know. I'm not trying to hurt them, but I don't want them to get caught into something down the road, you know?
Yeah.
No, it's a fair point.
Yeah, it is a fair point. I think at this point, it's a judgment as to what the likelihood is based on the general characteristics of the project. I'd say, although it's probably well worth looking at the master plan and looking at some of that data, it just happens to be stored there.
Yeah, and these just popped up because of all the research I did last month. I couldn't talk in the last meeting because I didn't find this until February.
Yeah, understood.
All right. Did you send this to all the members, including the ones on line?
Yeah, I'll get the email five minutes ago.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Armin.
Hi. I'm Ruth Lunatton, Carter Drive. I just, I thought I heard in the letters there that the Water District indicated that when they were all set with everything, that they would send a follow-up letter indicating that. And the applicant stated that he has these letters, so he, he knows that. So if everything is all set, I think it would have been good for the applicant to make sure the Water District sent that letter. And, I mean, for me, a priority is making sure that our town water is protected. So I think it's a good message to send to applicants that when the Water District asks for something, that the board will ensure that the Water District requests, quests are met. So I would say that if I were voting, I would want to make sure that that letter is there so that you know from the Water District that they agree with the assessment that the applicant is giving you. Thanks.
Yeah, fair enough. Do we, Evan, do we expect anything further?
From the Water District?
Yeah.
As the applicant indicated, there were a lot of conversations based upon the Water District's first letter, which at, at that time, this was proposing a Title V system.
Right. Yeah, that's shifted over, yeah.
The Board of Health and the Water District submitted letters with significant concerns. As you're hearing tonight, this is now going to be allowed to tie into the municipal system with a, with a payment in lieu.
Yeah.
Based upon DPW's policy and regulations. And as such, the primary concern from the Water District no longer exists.
Yeah, that's kind of what it sounds like here.
But I, I mean, I agree with Ruth in that, I mean, both they and the GPW kind of left things open in terms of having concerns.
Yeah, we can, you can certainly put a condition, and as part of your final endorsement, we send it out for redistribution, but you can certainly place a condition requiring, you know, clean letters from the district and GPW.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be prudent. I think that would be prudent. But I, I don't...
We have to have the clean letters before we take a vote on it.
Yeah, what I'm trying to tell you verbally is that, is that the applicant and myself are clarifying and articulating the conversations that have taken place. Moving forward, you know, if you want clean letters, and we all remember, then they'll, they'll be at the table. But right here, right now, a lot of conversations took place. Tony Rapucci, a town engineer, is not on Zoom this evening. If he were, he'd be able to vouch for the conversations that the applicant is indicating have taken place.
Okay. Well, I mean, I have no doubts that they took place the way they're recorded. I think it's reasonable for us to condition this on clean letters and, you know, before, you know, before I can actually proceed, but I don't think that, that keeps us from approving.
Yeah, because we're going to have to go through doing...
Let me run this around and...
Addition letters and everything, which is going to take another meeting. And by that time, I would expect that those letters would be in hand.
Okay.
I can, I can have those letters available for your next meeting.
Excellent.
When you'll ratify, review and ratify a decision.
Okay, that I think makes very good sense. So you're in a position to, you have enough to draft, to put together a draft at this point. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, assuming that the board, you know, as part of this meeting, heads in that direction.
Yeah. Well, let's run around the board. By the way, is there, is there anybody else that wanted to speak here? I didn't see anybody standing up, so I kind of assumed.
Anybody online?
Not that I see.
Okay, you would have... All right, well, we'll keep, we'll keep, we'll keep it open in case a, a point comes up that, that requires some discussion. But let's run it around the board once. Thoughts?
Everything looks good to me.
Yeah. Is, is this is, by the way, this is on SEOD, so this is a single, single approval?
It is a single SEOD approval. The, as the agenda indicates, they have requested the special permit under SEOD. They've requested, I believe, a parking reduction.
Yeah.
They've requested it's over 20,000 square feet, major business complex and...
Yes, they've requested all that. Okay, but that all gets voted on in one shot?
Very, the same exact format as 270.
Gotcha. Okay. Very good. Mike?
I think if we do vote tonight, we, I want to see the letters at the next meeting when we ratify.
Yeah, yeah, one we're, I, I would agree with you. I completely agree.
Otherwise, I'm going to withdraw, withdraw at that time.
Well, if, if we did it tonight, we would do a motion with the conditions that those letters are presented before.
At the 22nd.
Finalization of the...
That's fine.
Good by you.
Then why don't we just wait till we have the letters and make our decision then?
We could, but you know, delaying, delaying things to accumulate paperwork is not particularly efficient or effective. I don't see any need to.
Then we have to ratify at a subsequent meeting, and it'll be a different board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So...
So from a timing standpoint, does it...
I think, I think you're right.
Yeah, we didn't, I didn't even think of that.
Tim, do you have any thoughts? Tim, where are you?
What happened to Tim?
He's still, still on Zoom.
He's leaning on his mute button.
He's probably on mute.
Okay.
So let's just play this out.
Yeah, I was on mute. Making great points. I'm, I'm fine with making a decision tonight with it.
With a condition?
Yes, with a condition.
Okay.
To play this out, though.
Okay, let's play it out.
So what happens when, if we approve it tonight?
Yeah.
They don't have the letters on the 22nd. They have it at the first meeting on the, on the 12th. It's a different board. How's that work?
It's going to depend on the makeup of the board.
We're not going to approve it unless we see...
Yeah, so those, those letters, as I've indicated tonight, are, are, they're boilerplate. There's, there's no, there's no unresolved issues. You, you're, you could, you could handle the condition in a variety of ways. It could be prior to ratification, or you could embed it in the decision and say prior to issuance, prior to the planning board final endorsement of the final plans is when, is when you could do it, if you're concerned about a two-week timing. You could also do it prior to issuance of building permit.
That's probably the most, most effective.
So there's a variety of ways.
But we have ways.
There's a variety of ways for the board to, to have the, the record verify that those two particular departments are 100% satisfied.
I'm satisfied with that. All right. If there's no more discussion here, first thing we need to do, and I don't see anybody else wanting to speak from the public, but let me give it one more shot, then we need to close the public hearing.
Do you think we should have, request any clarification about the old special permits?
No, I think we're, I think we're...
Okay with that.
We, we certainly have the authority to...
To supersede our former selves.
To supersede it, yeah. Okay. So, all right, it would take a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
You have a second? In favor?
Aye.
Aye. One, two, three, four.
No.
Nay. Okay, no from Anita. Tim?
Tim's, Tim's an aye.
Okay, so it's one, two, three, four, five, six, one. Okay. Would I guess be a motion to grant the comprehensive special permit under SEOD?
Okay. Motion to grant special permit under SEOD for the addition to 250 Apollo as presented in the final plans with the conditions as stated in all of the department letters and subject to receiving clean department letters from...
Water and DPW.
Water and DPW.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second? In favor?
Aye.
We have five here. Tim?
I'm an aye.
You're an aye. I got that, Anita.
I'm an aye.
Okay, six, one. Very good. So Evan, if you could prepare a draft decision, then we'll...
Work through it at the...
We'll work through it at the next meeting and hope we can finish it off. But you've, you've, you've got your permit.
Great, thank you so much.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
All right.
All right.
Minutes to approve?
Uh, yeah, we have two sets of minutes to approve. They're pretty lengthy.
Evan, I'm putting a copy of that letter in with... All right. Motion to approve planning board minutes from 12/14/2022.
I'll second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Tim, Anita?
Aye.
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 Okay, seven zip.
And motion to approve planning board minutes from February 22nd, 2023.
I'll second.
In favor? Aye. Tim?
Aye.
Aye, and Anita? Got it.
Tim's an aye.
Okay, seven zip. Minutes are approved. I don't think there's a lot left in here.
Motion to adjourn.
No, new business?
New business?
Kidding me. Shot down again.
I would like to propose that we have a work session shortly after the next election, maybe the first meeting, to kind of reconvene as a board and talk amongst ourselves, maybe without anyone else besides the board, about the way the board does business in terms of both with the public, with the, with the proponents, and with ourselves, and with the town leadership. I, I watched part of the last meeting, and there was a couple of times when we kind of devolved into shouting.
Yeah.
I, I don't know. I feel like people's morale is quite low. There's a number of people I know have entertained leaving the board in, in addition to the ones who are actually not running. And I, I think if we want to have a board that works well together and works well for the public, that we should have some energy of ours devoted to the questions of how we're going to conduct ourselves.
And I completely agree. And I think we can, we can simply go ahead. Now, you know, we'll have a new board in there. They could make a different decision, but I think it's, it's eminently reasonable to make that part of the first post-election planning board meeting. Does anybody else here have a...
Earlier, what, 6:30? Half hour or nothing?
Yeah, well, the half hour's not going to be enough, but...
Your agendas are going to get really, like, quickly.
Yeah.
Just the 22nd, no new public hearings. You'll have the ratification of this decision.
Right.
Whatever administrative items come in. April 12th, there's two new public hearings. They're pretty straightforward. They're not major projects. And then you have your April 26 meeting.
Now, when's the election? What's the date?
First week in April.
First Tuesday in April.
First week, so that 12th, so the meeting on the 12th is post-election.
That's right. Always is.
Okay, okay.
So you could be, you could begin that conversation as part of...
I think we should.
The 12th, or you could dedicate a special time and date?
Let's, let's, given that it, it's going to be at least somewhat a different group, let's start the conversation on the 12th. And then the, the group at that point, however it's comprised...
So just, just to clarify, because Deidre had called me and spoke to me about this earlier, previously. I, I, I have no problem not being part of that meeting. I think it, I think it, I think the Board has merit to have a conversation among yourselves.
Yeah.
However, that conversation doesn't trigger any of the executive session purposes.
Right.
So that will be held as part of a public meeting.
Right, it has to be.
It will be.
It is an open meeting, yeah.
It'll be an open meeting, not a public meeting.
Correct, correct.
No, it is a public. We're not asking for input.
Correct.
No, it is a public meeting with an agenda.
Right.
But we won't be asking for public.
Correct.
That is correct.
We don't have any public input added.
In the past, what the Board has done is if you, if you put it on the agenda as a work session, the Board sometimes has, more often than not, work sessions are not televised at the Board's request. That's entirely your, your decision. You have time to figure that out.
If we have questions for Paul, we write it down. It's not that urgent.
If you want Paul to be there.
He doesn't need to be there.
No, I don't think he does.
He can get our input after.
Yeah, you have a list of questions. So there's pros and cons, you know, to having staff, not having staff.
I think you should be there. You're part of this committee with us, and I think you need to be.
I have no problem being there. I can step out if there's parts. I do, I do believe that the Board has Board business, that I, as I refer to it, which means if staff didn't exist, and the public didn't exist, and the applicant didn't exist, how would the Board go about its business?
Right.
Doing a review, doing a deliberation? And I think that may be what you're speaking to.
Let's, I, I think, I think there's some merit in what you say. Come along, join us if for some reason we've.
Yeah, I'm just letting you know, I mean.
Given that it's a public meeting anyway.
Sure.
You know, I, I don't see, it makes a lot of sense excluding anybody in particular.
Why wasn't necessarily suggesting excluding?
I know, you weren't.
I didn't take it that way. Like I said, we spoke, so I have a.
Yeah. And, and we spoke as well, and I like this idea, and I think we need to do it. It's been a bumpy year, and I think we need to discuss why it was bumpy.
If I thought you were going to talk about me, then obviously I want to be there.
That's what you're talking about.
But, you know, I assume, I assume when we refer to Board business, it's about the seven members interacting and engaging and trying to have a productive Board.
Okay, good. But then let's schedule that.
It's too bad we couldn't have public input on Paul.
Well.
What are you going to have?
We will, perhaps.
No, I know, but that's the other side of this.
That doesn't make sense.
That's half the reason we all want to leave.
The elephant in the room, it's how do we deal with.
Okay.
Well, go.
Yeah. Listen to, listen to town meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, that'll.
Yeah. And, and by the way, check out Facebook.
No, no, there's people in this room that are going to be part of the committee, and there's also going to be people in this room that are, they're doing their diligence right now on what we, the mistake that we made two weeks ago. So you want to open up to the public, by all means. I'm all for that. You want to do that, go for it.
Well, they want to be a copa. We have to be transparent, so that's all I'm saying.
Every meeting you have, it's a, it's a whole different group of people that come from different areas of the town. You're not going to fill an auditorium to talk about.
No, I get it, but in this room right now, there are people that would probably like to speak.
I know.
And they do.
And they can. I mean, if you want to open it up to public.
I mean, some, some of this, some of this is.
Committee.
Yeah, go ahead Anita. Yeah, go ahead.
I just, my two cents, I think we should have a work, because we have a lot of things to work out secretly, like basic one-on-one. I think, I think Diego had a great idea.
I do too.
Those elected, and we just kind of walked through the procedures, right? Like of how we interact and how we run meetings.
Right.
Or at least how, or open up the discussion so we can then, you know, bring in those and go to the right people for answers.
Right. No, I think, I, I agree with you.
I got a question to ask you, Evan. What happens when a majority of the Board leaves? Do you have to have, does the town have to have certain? Does the town have to have a certain number? I'm asking Evan, does the town have to have a certain number of Board members present in order for the Board to conduct business?
So you need, you need a minimum of five normally to vote on a special permit.
Yeah.
So statutorily, yeah, there.
So if you didn't have five.
So then there's, there's special provisions, the voter necessity. But there's also provisions within the Town Charter where the, the Planning Board and the Select Board convene a joint meeting and basically appoint somebody to fill.
Yeah.
So there is a provision to appoint.
Yeah, there, there's a mechanism for appointing.
Without getting town elections, yes.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to know. That was a good question. Because I was wondering, I wondered the same thing not that long ago.
I don't want the business of the Board to stop.
Sure.
Because there's people that leave.
That's happened with resignations.
Yes, it's, yeah, that's typically how it happens.
So it goes to appointed.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
I, one more thing, I think that we, you know, to be, being on the Board, you're supposed, we're supposed to all review the, I think it's the open meeting laws after every, each time we're elected and the ethics guidelines each year. And so even though it's not the right time for some of us to review the open meeting laws, I think that maybe we should make a commitment as a group that we review that. I, there is a, I found a six little slideshows.
Yeah, it's a very, it's a very good little write-up. I think I know the one you made.
On the mess.
It will look good on the barn wall.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I'm not going to watch it on the barn wall, but I think it would be a good thing for us all to review and just make a commitment to do that. Even if it's, even if we didn't just get elected and it's not our turn for a couple of years to do it. We probably should just do it now.
Yeah, it's probably, it's always a good idea. Okay.
Go ahead.
You're on.
I am? Motion to adjourn.